Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Malala City Council for August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's rules of order will be enforced in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Audience members, we request that you silence your cellphones and not conduct side conversations during the meeting. Thank you. Roll call, beginning with Councilor Bartholomew. Councilor Bartholomew present. Council President Vermillion present.
Councilor Childress present.
Councilor Schenkel present.
Councilor Gilmer present.
Assistant City Manager Mac Corthell present.
City Recorder Kristi Teetz present.
Do staff or council have any changes to the agenda? See and none. All right. Consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion and second. Is there discussion by council? All right, hearing none. Kristi, please call the vote.
Councilor Gilmer?
Aye.
Councilor Schenkel?
Aye.
Councilor Childress?
Aye.
Councilor Bartholomew?
Aye.
Council President Vermillion?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote passes, five zero.
All right, moving on, public comment. Do we have any public comment besides the letters?
No, this evening only what was submitted to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
Question, please.
I'm sorry, if I may, I just wanted to give a brief update. I have spoken to Mr. Bops a couple of times and email communication with him. So it's important that his letter does, you know, contain some issues and some concerns, but he asked that I pass on to both staff and the council how grateful he was. He watched the meeting and that the council and staff would be so considerate and thoughtful about their business and what they're doing out there and et cetera. That may not prevent him from appealing, and I did encourage him to say, hey, that's your right, and we would never begrudge that. But I am keeping him in the loop on our efforts as far as mitigating those use conflicts. I don't know that that changes much with him or doesn't, but I just wanted to let you guys know and give you an update that we have been in contact and speaking on a fairly regular basis about the topic.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay, great. All right. Moving on. Ordinance and resolutions. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-five twenty-one, awarding a contract for project twenty-four dash twelve, North Malala Avenue ADA crosswalk construction. Mr. Corthell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening again, council. So this is a project that you guys are all well aware of. This is the North Malala ADA crosswalk that will provide an enhanced pedestrian crossing at North Malala there in Francis, kind of in between the going towards the high school or the middle school, depending on which direction you're coming from. But a lot of kids use that crosswalk, and it's blinding at certain times of day, we all know. And that's actually led to some pedestrian versus vehicle collisions in the past. So when we overlaid North Malala Avenue, the idea was we're not going to put this crosswalk back in. One, because it wasn't compliant with several rules, you know, ADA laws and rules. But two, because we felt that it was appropriate to enhance that, to enhance the traffic safety in that area because of the conditions that do occur out there and the numerous kids that cross. So that's why you're kind of seeing maybe for an ADA crosswalk, a higher number than you'd expect. It's not simply an ADA crosswalk, it's enhanced crossing with traffic calming features and a kind of a blinking signal and that good stuff. So there's a little bit more to it. This bid actually came in a little bit under our engineer's cost estimate, so we think that it's a good and fair price.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to approve or amend resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-one, awarding a contract for project twenty-four dash twelve, North Malala Avenue ADA crosswalk construction?
I move the city of Malala to adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-one, awarding a contract for project twenty-four dash twenty-three, North Malala Avenue ADA crosswalk construction.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Kristi, please call the vote.
Certainly, Councilor Gilmer?
Aye.
Councilor Schenkel?
Aye.
Councilor Childress?
Aye.
Councilor Bartholomew?
Aye.
Council President Vermillion?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote passes, five zero.
Okay, moving on to general business. Just flying through this. All right. Naming Cemetery Park. Mr. Corthell, can we have your staff report, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. So the city recently contracted with Amp Farm Youth Services to clear the brush from what I'm calling Cemetery Park, for lack of a name, and in fact, that's the topic tonight. While that's getting cleared, that's going to clear up about a two-point-six acre creekside park, and then the city can roll into, you know, conceptual design at that point. But for now, we can start the process of looking at naming that park. And so I wanted to present a few options to the council for different naming evolutions. We haven't adopted a park naming policy yet, so I basically was saying, hey, there's numerous options. Here's a few to look at. One note I wanted to make is that the cemetery is a historic cemetery, so it's not part of the park naming. I'm just calling it Cemetery Park again, for sake of identification. And so in this case, I put some options out there. Of course, those are not all of them. They're unlimited. But I saw some good options here that might be appropriate. And one thing we could do is we could put out a survey and use our online platforms to reach a broader audience and just collect input and feedback for the council to kind of consider. We could have a naming contest, make it kind of fun, and put together kind of a contest type of situation. What folks would win would be, you know, yet to be determined, but a contest could be one option. Council could provide options, and then we could poll the community on a set of options that you guys want us to put out there instead of just having a, you know, open-ended question. And then, of course, council can literally just select a name that they think is appropriate and maybe representative of something important to the community and the culture. So, you know, again, options are limitless. Any, you know, one or more of these can be used. We're just kind of looking at what direction to take it, if any direction at all, and get this started. So once we have a concept, we know what to call it.
Great, thank you. So council, what's your opinion? I kind of think some community participation would be awesome to have, but looking for what you guys think also.
Do we know the history of that little cemetery, or who owned the property, or anything like that?
You know what? I don't. But I don't, but I'm trying to think of the name. There's a state organization that deals with these local cemeteries, and I've worked with them before. The name's escaping me for some reason. I can figure that out. But they usually have some background on these, minimal, but they often have something. So I can dig into that a little bit more, for sure.
And this was a property that was owned by somebody? It's just...
So the cemetery itself is a historic pioneer cemetery, so it preexists the city itself. But the property surrounding it was actually dedicated as part of the Stone Place apartment development.
Okay.
And just has been kind of, you know, sitting waiting for development for a while, and it's been overgrown by about ten to twelve feet of blackberry bushes. So, yeah, we've got the Amp Farm out there clearing that stuff out as we speak. Well, probably not as we speak, but today they were out there, and will be out there again tomorrow until all that stuff's gone.
What about, there's a couple of headstones broken, and they were like for the ones for babies. Would those ever be fixed, or are they just going to be left like that? I don't know if someone purposely did it, but yeah, it's pretty old. It has people that actually travel the Oregon Trail buried there.
It's really cool, and I've actually worked with a group called Cemetery Savers in the past, and they come out and do really non-intrusive kind of restoration. They'll kind of piece back together those old headstones. They'll clean them with special chemicals that don't harm the headstones. They're so old and brittle, that sort of thing. So I think that that's something that we would look at as we go into that kind of development phase. But certainly, I think they're going to go in there and clean up the brush and that sort of stuff. But to actually start doing physical work on the headstones and that, I think we'd want to probably engage with that nonprofit, just because they have means and methods that don't harm, and they're very familiar with doing this kind of work. So I'd love to engage with them again. I'm sure they'd love to come up here. They just love it when they find a new cemetery, and they can dig into that. So short answer, yes.
Okay.
I know that in the past, we have brushed on developing standards for naming parks, streets, et cetera. And I'm wondering if we're putting the cart before the horse in just deciding to name this particular park based on some general ideas instead of developing the policy first on what, under what guidelines, how can you name a park? You know, what significance does it have to have, et cetera, and if we need to back that up and work on that first?
That's absolutely one of the unlisted options, certainly, is to say, hey, let's table this and get a policy put together. That's certainly an option.
I would hate to name a park today and six months down the road, develop a policy that goes against what we named a park.
Right.
Which could easily happen. So I personally am in favor of developing a naming policy and putting some guidelines around it before we move further with naming Cemetery Park.
I kind of like Cemetery Park.
There's a few others I could think of.
No, no, kidding.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, is it a consensus that we should sit down and develop a policy for naming a park?
I think so.
Or naming parks, streets in general? Okay.
Perfect.
So we'll go ahead and table that till...
Perfect, thank you. And I also want to just briefly stress that we've got some time.
Yeah.
We're just in the clearing process, and then there's going to be the conceptual design process, and then from there, the design. I mean, so there's time. So it's just one of those things I thought we could look at, and we're looking at it, and we're going to make some progress on how to do this in the future. So it's great.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Corthell, and Councilor Childress, thank you.
Mr. President, I just wanted to add one last thing before we left the subject. I also think it needs a new fence around it. That one is, it's, yeah, it's not any good.
There isn't even any on certain parts of it.
Yeah.
That's part of that.
It's just all broken and run down and stuff. I think I like one of those, like, maybe one of those black ones, metal ones around the whole thing, the nice-looking ones, you know, something like that.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to throw that in there.
Yeah, that'll be part of that design process. And you guys will be obviously weighing in heavily on that and have ultimate decisions on all of that.
Because as I was looking at it, I mean, like I said, you know, there's people that travel the Oregon Trail that are buried there, and all it takes is some drunk people to wander in there one night, and it's gone. So that was one of my, especially when I saw some of the baby ones broken, the, I can't remember. Headstones, yeah. Some of the baby headstones, they were broken, so I just wanted to throw that in there.
Absolutely.
All righty, anything else, anybody? Okay, moving on to farm stands and cottage kitchens. Just an ordinance update. Mr. Corthell, can we have your staff report?
Yes, sir. So this one is basically me letting you guys know that the reason this hasn't come back to you yet, there's kind of a couple of them. Obviously, we became a little bit short-staffed, unfortunately and unexpectedly, so that had something to do with it. And this is kind of one of those things, it's not deadline-driven like much of the things that we do. But what I will say also is that I'm delaying it further, and here's the reason. DLCD is now in the process of making standards for farm stands. I don't know if they'll apply in cities. I don't know if they'll apply in counties, and I don't know what they'll be. Much of what we discussed was going to marry back to the existing standards and be basically a referral back to the standards. I don't know if that's what we'll want once we see what those standards are. So I'm kind of waiting for them to tell us what they're doing. It's kind of baffling why this is a top-tier issue for DLCD, but it is. And so we are, I'm just letting you guys know why I'm standing by on this, is because I don't know where they're going to come down, and we may do a bunch of work on something that ends up being completely overruled by the state, or produce an outcome that we don't necessarily want to see. So I want to wait till and see where the dust settles on that before we push anything forward to you guys.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. Staff communications. City Recorder Teetz.
Yes. First, you'll notice there is a report from Library Director Hadley. That is something that was sent to her library board recently, and she wanted to be sure to share it with the council as well. My report goes like this. Good evening again, council. At the last meeting, I promised an update on candidates regarding the background check consent information. As of this date, there are now six candidates who have applied for, to be appointed to council.
How many?
Six. If six, and possibly a seventh by Friday. All of the information is due to me Friday at four-thirty. To this point, everyone has consented to conduct the background check. I'm still working with Nicole next door at the PD. Everyone has met the criteria with the exception of one, and that's just because she got busy today, and I haven't heard back from her. So I'm unable to give you a complete yes at this point. And then, next, City Manager Huff, Mayor Kaiser, and I have been working to streamline the process for council appointment. That always is a little bumpy each time we're faced with it. And so, like I worked with you all in February about streamlining the city manager evaluation, this was also a goal for myself to work with the city manager and mayor to create, hopefully, a better process. So, Mr. Huff, Mayor Kaiser, and I have worked on this. What you see in front of you is a culmination of that. Mayor Kaiser did ask that I introduce this to you, this process to you tonight for this appointment. If it works, well, then perhaps we'll get to adopt it as a policy, and if not, we can go back to the drawing board. This is just something we're going to try this time. So as I said, there's currently six candidates. We have decided to do a panel style for the candidates, though likely because of the microphones and how things are set up in here, I'll set three candidates here, three candidates over there. City Manager Huff and myself will likely be there with council seated at the dais. There have been questions created. Each of you will have an opportunity to ask a candidate a question. They'll get two minutes tops. The questions will be sent to them prior. You'll get to see them, well, you have them all in front of you tonight, but they'll get to see them as well, so they can be preparing for the interview. It was important to Mayor Kaiser that questions covered the knowledge, or at least the awareness of how the city is run by charter, code, master plans. Also, that we work, that the council works through a visioning plan process, knowledge of the budgeting process, and then overall, a question about the willingness of the time commitment for city council. And you'll see when you review each of those questions that we've been very thoughtful to encompass all of that. And then, at the end of the interviews, you'll be given a ballot, your score that each candidate, from one to four, one being the lowest, four being the highest. I'll take them. I'll share with you all what it is, what the score is. This will all happen during the work session. And then at the regular session, there'll be an appointment for city council. You'll have to make the motion then at the regular session. And then the swearing-in will take place at the September tenth meeting. So we still are several weeks away as far as getting somebody in here, but we're getting closer. We will need a full hour to conduct the interviews, so we'll begin the work session at six P.M. I'll notice the regular session for seven fifteen, so we can have a quick break in between there. And my goal is to have all of the applications to you all no later than Tuesday of next week, so you can have a full week, eight days, to look at the applications. Some have submitted resumes, others have not, but I do want you to have an opportunity to at least review and kind of get to know your applicants a little bit before we sit down with them. So that's my report, and if you have any questions related to this, I'm happy to answer. Yes, ma'am?
Will they be given these ahead of time?
They will.
So they, I mean, because like I knew nothing, so I want to make sure they're not...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, they'll be given the questions, and I suppose it will be up to them on how thoroughly they want to research those.
Exactly, yeah.
Councilor Childress?
Well, I was going to say, there's a lot of stuff here we're requiring somebody to know that I don't think, I mean, I can't say for sure, but I certainly didn't know all of this when I came on the council. We're usually glad to get live bodies, and we're certainly glad to have six people interested.
Right.
But I don't want to make a council position so onerous that somebody's going to withdraw their application. And I think we've overstepped on these questions.
One and two especially.
Six. Where does it say that we're required?
Oh, yeah.
For a time commitment for events outside of city council. I suggest we look at what our charter says is required of a council person and compare these questions to it, because I don't think they're all here. I don't think, I don't think all of these requirements that we're asking in questions one through six are in our charter, unless you're going to tell me that you compared and that you're confident they are. You understand my question?
That was a lot, and I'm processing and I'm thinking about...
Yeah, well, I did do a major dump there, didn't I?
Yeah. Well, and looking at number five, too, how can they give us a view if they've never been of our overall economic health, if they've never been involved in any of that process?
These are more thirty thousand foot questions than they are in the weeds question. I think more than anything, the thoughtfulness behind them is are folks aware that this is how you all are governed?
Okay.
Are folks aware that there's seventeen funds? You know, we talk to you all often about parks. I'll just use parks as an example. People want things, you know, updates done to a park or maintenance and whatnot. And what a lot of folks don't realize is that there's this much money that we may go this far each year. And so I think they really, it's more good job, seasoned counselors, but these really are, I can't have a conversation unless I'm talking with my hands. These really are more questions related to the awareness of the overall job.
Okay.
And I would say, overall, as far as your council duties and responsibilities related to the charter, that there was mindfulness in these questions related to what your duties as a counselor is. So, and I think as far as the time commitment, the intention was...
Definitely.
Well, what I know, I can speak to, is that the intention was you don't all just show up at six o'clock for a work session every other Wednesday, or seven o'clock every other Wednesday, that there is time involved in reading your packet, that we have goal setting in January, that there are events that take place in the city that are very much, you know, council-driven, whether it's celebrate Malala or spring cleanup, that sometimes we hold town halls that you all are present for, LOC conferences, onboarding, you know, with the city manager and myself. Those, all of those things take your time. So the intention was more to bring awareness to it's not just two meetings a month.
Right.
So I hope that provides a little bit better of an explanation.
That does explain number six. It could be...
Worded a little bit differently, but still, yeah.
Yeah, because it sounds like events.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't sound like reading your packet ahead of time and things of that nature. That wasn't the way it sounded to me, anyway, but...
It sounded more like, are you going to participate and celebrate Malala and the garbage day? Those are our events. Of course, we want them to, but...
Yeah, we do.
But it's not a requirement.
But it's not a requirement.
What we want out of the councilors is for them to be an ambassador for this city. But that doesn't, that isn't spoken to anywhere in particular, but that is what we want. And some councilors spend more time than others doing that.
Certainly.
But it's not absolutely demanded of everybody.
Of course.
I guess, I guess these just sound onerous to me.
Number one, I mean, I would be more concerned with, do they even know what the city's responsibilities are? You know, what are we actually responsible for? Because you know how everybody wants us to fix ODOT's road? I'm more, I would like to know, do they, do they understand that we only provide this, 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 and this, you know, and we are not responsible for the fire department, and we're not responsible for that ODOT road down there?
Right.
You know, and no, we can't take funds from here and go pave a road because it's not... So those are the things I'm kind of wanting to know. If they have at least somewhat of an understanding.
So you're welcome to ask the question. I mean, I think if we use the questions as a guideline, you can certainly ask the question, how you would like to ask it.
Okay.
That said, how you choose to ask it has to be the same for everything.
Everybody, right.
Yeah, we can't, we can't twist it halfway through. So when you ask it, for one, it has to be asked that way for all. That's how we do it in an employee interview process. If you ask an additional question...
Right, you have to ask every one of them, yeah. So you guys, you guys got this?
Yeah. And it certainly isn't to scare anyone off. That said, your role as city councilors is quite large. You are ambassadors for the city, and the decisions that you have, that you make for our city, and also has everything to do with how you direct staff. So I think from an interview standpoint, your job is to just try to get a general feel of how that person is going to work with you all, and it's staff's job to educate them. I mean, just by, for, I'll speak for city manager and myself. I mean, we always, I mean, you all know, you've met, each of you have met with me, we do an onboarding process. So, and then the introduction to PSU Boot Camp, or, you know, the OCCMA toolkit, and making sure to provide lots of resources. I know many of council members also meet with Assistant City Manager Corthell. So there is just as much staff ownership in the questions as there is for city council, I would say.
Anybody else?
Anybody, you guys have any concerns?
Well, let me interject. I think being ambassador for the city also includes being available to the citizens of the city also, within parameters of, we have our lives, you know, we have our families, but we also know how to schedule things and take a look at the calendar and make yourself available when you can. And I think that's some of the premise behind these questions. And I have to also point out, we do have two applicants that are in the audience tonight. I don't know how many are watching online, but they are already experiencing what happens in our meetings and finding out
Right.
what we do. And I know that I've been approached by a few of them, and they've asked me, what do you guys do? What's the time commitment? What is the expectation? You know, and those kind of questions speaks a lot to their desire and their commitment, I think. But anyway, I am just super excited that we've got six, possibly seven
Me, too.
people interested in the one spot. So that's outstanding. Anyway, anything else?
Well, I will, I would like to add just real quick, for an appointment, I haven't ever had this many applications for an appointment in my time here. And furthermore, even to go back to an election cycle, I'm not, I've not had this many in an election cycle. So it is exciting. And I think, I will say, as your city recorder, it was very important to me that we have to be really organized with how we enter this interview process with this, with this many candidates. So, there you go.
Great.
And speaking...
And, and speaking, speaking to that, saying we have to be organized, would you go over for me again, how we will do this? If we have, say, we have seven panelists, they're the panelists, and we ask one question, do all seven get to answer?
They do.
Or one and three can say they want to answer it, and the rest don't have to answer it, et cetera?
They all have to answer each, each, depending, it will also depend on time, perhaps, you know, we'll do our very best to get through all six questions, but each candidate will have two minutes to answer their, their question. Um, so some may be a little bit briefer than that, but we're gonna try to keep it to two minutes. I'm gonna pull my handy-dandy timer out, so they can watch the time counting, counting down, but we, we will keep it to two minutes. And then at the very end, if we've got time left and, um, you, you have a follow-up question for, uh, certain individuals, you'll be welcome to do that.
Well, based on that timeframe, there won't be any minutes left at the end of an hour.
That's correct.
It'll take longer than an hour, if you have every, that many people, and they're given two minutes apiece to answer six questions.
Mm-hmm. It's true.
So what would we do in that case?
When, when to ask all six questions?
We'd narrow it down.
I, I, I will suggest it, it would be narrowed down, and you'd have to, I, I would also suggest at the very beginning of the work session, that, and maybe it's something you all can think about, I'll send a follow-up email, so Mayor Kaiser can be part of this conversation as well, but perhaps what you look at are the top three that are the most important to you, and send those to, to me privately, um, so we don't, we're not gonna create a serial meeting here, um, but send your, your top three questions that are more, most important to you. And my guess is, um, having worked with each of you for a while now, I think you're gonna have a lot of similarities. So if there's one question that is just not being singled out, then we could do a process of elimination of, of what question can be missed.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Very good, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we want to get it all done at one meeting, certainly.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly, and it, it will also be an agenda item during the regular session, so if we need a few extra minutes, if you all need a few extra minutes to deliberate during the regular session, you'll have time to, to do that, so we'll have time at, at both meetings. I mean, yes, ideally, it would be great for us to conduct all of our interviews and, and collect our information during that work session, but if we need a little bit more time, then we will have that, um, available to us during the regular session as well. Yes, sir?
Are you gonna email the updated list once you have, once you know for sure who the last two are?
I, I will, you'll get it to me on Tuesday at the very latest.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? Any more questions for City Reporter Teetz? Okay. Assistant City Manager Corthell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, gentlemen. I'll, I'll go through these things kind of quickly. So, um, I spoke to ODOT today about why this project on two eleven on a way seems to not be progressing in any way, shape, or form. Um, they, they provided me, um, an updated schedule. Apparently, there were some more design modifications that had to happen for some odd reason, um, something about asphalt thickness and the numbers that had been given to the engineering firm didn't match with ODOT's numbers, and so there had to be a design tweak. And so anyways, long story short, is that they're projecting right now with their schedule that that will all be done in mid-November. Um, so I, I, I'm at a bit of a loss on how they're gonna pave in October, um, but, um, that's what they seem to be telling us. And so anyways, I just wanted to be able to provide you guys some update, because I've been as baffled as you have, and we've, um, kind of reached out to ODOT and the developer and haven't gotten any really straight answers. And today, I was able to speak with a, a member of the upper management team and, and get some really straight answers on, on, on what things are looking like as we sit here today. So I did get the updated schedule, it does show completion in November with paving in, in, in late September, early October. So I think we're crossing our fingers for good weather at this point, um, I, I, for lack of a, unfortunately, we don't hold the bonds or any of the, pull any of the strings on, on, on that, so, um, yeah. But, uh, in better news, um, our M P D S permit update should be back out to public comment. Why is it going back out to public comment, you may ask? Um, the reason that it's going back out to public comment is because some substantial changes were made between the original draft permit that was very, remained very problematic, um, and the one that is going out for, for public notice. It should be out now. Um, it should be out now, they, they, about three days ago, excuse me, they told us they were, um, packaging it up for public comment. So, um, some very advantageous changes were, were made there that, that, that were appropriate, um, and, and, and based on, you know, real science. Um, so, for instance, um, our, uh, mass loading, um, it's kind of a complex topic to discuss, but basically, our, our daily limit had gone up, or our weekly limit had gone up, but the monthly limit had remained the same. So ultimately, you average it out, it doesn't change anything, you still have to meet that monthly limit. Um, so that, that, that has gone up to the basin standard where it should be, that's why it's called the basin standard. Um, and, and so we were, you guys are all privy to this, but we were put under the, basically, the standard for Bear Creek, but we don't discharge to Bear Creek, we discharge to the Malala River. Um, and that's what's kind of caused you guys' issues. In, in a very compact nutshell, there's a lot more to it, but in a very compact nutshell, that's what has caused the issues with that wastewater treatment plan, is that it was given the wrong standard for mass loading, um, for a tiny little creek as opposed to, you know, a medium-sized river. Um, and so that is getting corrected, as well as, um, the, um, some of the mercury monitoring that we were gonna have to do. We've only ha- ever had one kind of positive mercury sample of the hundreds and hundreds of samples we've taken, and somehow, they were kind of relying on that to put in this new set of standards and requirements that would cost the citizens of this town several thousand dollars. So, um, you know, we, we, uh, our team did a really, really good job of kind of pushing back on that and, and showing, you know, some logic in doing some of those things. And, and D Q, to their credit, I, I have to give them credit, did listen, and, and did listen with open ears, and, and came back with, with things that we think are, are fair. Um, and that get Malala to where it needs to be and should have been. Um, so that's very, very good news. We were kind of high-fiving in the hallway after we heard that. Um, it was, it was a big deal, um, a long, hard fight, um, one that I've only taken up about halfway. Um, a lot of people were doing this stuff before us, but, um, you know, we've all carried it through, and, and, and so I think we're gonna come out on the other side with, with an appropriate set of standards to follow. Chief Oakus Park, the playground is in. Um, we are polishing off the last bit of the accoutrements there. I think they're still waiting on some ADA tables, you know, long lead-time stuff, but, um, there's a little bit of construction left to do, but that's kind of wrapping up. I think we should see that wrapped up by the end of August here, um, and, and, and ready to go. Uh, the wastewater treatment plant is moving along well also. You guys have probably seen the control building walls going up, like, what's that house doing out there? Um, so, so that's, uh, that's the new control building. Um, so i- i- it's moving along well, and actually, we think we've identified an opportunity to, um, without getting too far into the weeds, this, this project was phased in order to remove the sledge from, um, Lagoon Two and use that as freshwater holding with bypass pumping. We think we've, we've, we've identified an opportunity, we're, working with our engineers and the contractors, um, to, to basically get all the paperwork and get all the Ts crossed and Is dotted, but to get all of the bio-solids out of both lagoons, um, basically by the time we would have had them out of one. Um, so that will be a, a big cost savings, and that will be something I think we had until, um, in the, in the M O A with D E Q, I think we had until November of twenty thirty-three. We'll finish that off five years in advance. Um, so, um, not only does that bode well for the community and, and the groundwater and everything else, um, it, it, it just shows D E Q that Malala does good work and that we're, we're, we're trying to do the right thing, and so it paints us in a very good light with them, um, in the future, uh, and, and moving forward. We just hired a new utility one to replace Cody. Unfortunately, Cody went on to Northwest Natural, and, um, so he's, uh, he's out working at Northwest Natural, but we hired Jeff Borden. Um, Jeff's great, he's a fisherman, uh, he worked out, up on the boats in Alaska for many years, and so the man knows a thing or two about hard work, um, and, and we're really excited to have him, he seems like a great fit for the team. Uh, we just interviewed water operator one candidates and had just a, just a slew of really good candidates. Honestly, it makes it very hard to select, um, but we had some great candidates there for water operator one position, and so we'll, we'll hopefully be making a job offer when Dan gets back to town. Um, and then we are interviewing, um, Friday for that, to fill our associate planner position, so, um, and we've gotten, again, some really good applicants on paper there, I haven't met any of them yet, so I'll, I'll report back on if I still think they're good afterward, but, um, they, they seem, they seem to be great on paper, so, um, obviously, I think it speaks volumes for, for the city and, 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 and you guys and the staff and just everything that we do out here that I hear from a lot of other folks in, in, in similar roles, that they're having problems hiring this position, problems hiring that position. We really don't see that too often. We generally have way more than, 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 you know, than, than, we have so many generally that it makes it really, really hard to pick and even call the herd. I mean, that, that's how many we usually get, and they're highly qualified people for the roles that they're applying for. So, um, just speaks volumes, Malala is a place that one of people want to go and they want to work, so, um, it's awesome. So that's all I have for you guys today, unless you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Corthell? All right. Well then, moving on to, uh, Council Communication, Councilor Bartholomew.
Refer into the library.
Did you have anything to...
Uh, no, uh, just keep putting the calendar up for the library and their events have, uh, they've had a lot more people come into their events, and so I think, uh, because I'm just throwing it out there all the time, and, uh, reported increase in, in, uh, participation, and that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Kilmer?
I don't have any report on the parks. I did see an email come across about counterfeit hundred-dollar bills floating around town again, so...
Saw that, too.
You were.
Thank you, Counselor.
Oh, I don't have anything, because I'll let her take it over.
Counselor Childers, then.
She's gonna let me take it over. Celebrate Malala, one week from this Saturday. And, uh, we have a record number of presenters at the event this year, as of right this moment, and, uh, we're excited about that. We have new artists coming in and new handcrafters. We have some people who've been with us since twenty eighteen, since the very first event, and they've come back every year. So, uh, we're really, uh, we're really proud that we can do a, a good enough, uh, event that they want to come back, you know? Uh, I used to do events, and, and so it, uh, when you want to go back, that's always a good sign, so we're, we're, we're proud of that, I can't help but say that. And, uh, it's gonna be a good day, the temperature's still forecast to be eighty-one degrees and sunny, so good weather. Uh, we're pretty much up on volunteers, we thank those of you who've stepped up and volunteered, we appreciate that. Mac, I have a new job for you that I need to talk to you about after the meeting, don't let me forget that, please. And, uh, so we're looking forward to it. Come out, we've got some fun music, fun music all day long, from noon to six, we'll have somebody on stage, except when they're changing out, and we've got new, we, we try to get you some new music every year, and I think, I think you're gonna have fun with the music this year.
That's August twenty-third.
August twenty-third, one week from Saturday, eleven A M. to six P M. Food trucks, we have six food vendors, a couple of new ones, we have pizza, Whole Pizza this year, another barbecue place, uh, Gaggy Row is back, they've been with us since the inset, onset, outset, whatever, since the beginning. And Lucy's Juices and Mexican Food, and Hot Dogs Wrapped in Bacon, hard to beat that, and Christie's Down Home Smash Burgers. So, I'm gonna entice you one way or another. So that's it, I hope to see you there.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, uh, this has been an interesting evening without our mayor tonight, who is attending our, um, Oregon Mayors Association, uh, conference, along with our city manager, Dan Huff. Uh, our mayor was also a part of the planning committee, he, he chaired that committee that, uh, planned the events, uh, and the agenda, which also included a class that was gonna be taught, will be taught, by our city manager, Dan Huff, and our mayor, with regards to mayor and city manager relations. And, um, that would be a fun one to watch. I know you're looking at me, Scott, but, uh...
I'd just see that.
Yes.
I would, too.
So, anyway, I think it's, um, it's great that, um, our mayor is, and city manager's that dedicated in, in helping others navigate that fun relationship. Uh, last week, we had National Night Out, and I, that was a, a very fun experience for me, as, um, I'm a substitute teacher in a local school here, seeing all the kids coming up and, and greeting me, and then running into others within the community, it was, it was a lot of fun. The parks, C P C, they held their garage sale, uh, their total income from that was two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-six cents.
Good job.
There were some other items, uh, that, there are bottle drop and ornament sales and some concessions that just shy of seventy-four dollars, so there was quite a bit, uh, twenty-seven hundred and eighty-four dollars that were deposited. The next meeting is tomorrow night at City Hall at five-thirty. Also happening tomorrow is our Malala Chamber Networking Meeting, um, starting at eight A M. at our Fire Hall. So, um, that's about all I have, thank you so much, Mr. Corthell and, and Ms. Teetz, for your work tonight and, and everything. Um, this last weekend, share something a little on the personal side, my wife and I, uh, we were in the Lincoln City area, and the day of our anniversary, which was a Saturday, went to breakfast, ran into the, uh, Estacada School District, um, Business Manager, and then at lunch, ran into a, uh, uh, person that works here on, at the city of Malala. And then later on, when we went to the Christmas cottage, ran into a couple members of Malala Community. So, couldn't get away from you guys.
There's no escaping us.
So, anyway, it was a lot of fun, especially when we had lunch, and, and, um, um, that one individual sat right next to us, and I didn't recognize her at first, and then I looked past her hat, and, oh, yes. Anyway, it was a lot of fun, so...
It was a disguise.
Um, yeah, that's, that's all I have for tonight. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Okay, hearing nothing? I'll adjourn this meeting at...
Yeah.
Seven forty-eight.